Okay, if we can go ahead and call the meeting to order, evidently it is.
Seven o'clock?
No, so thank you. And if we could stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please go to the roll.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The first item is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note that you have five minutes. We have, nobody's signed up currently, but is there anyone that would like to make public comments? Yes, please come forward. Thank you. And that, state your name and address for the record, as you know.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Rose Garringer. I live at 9931 West 56th Street. About a year ago, one of our neighbors told us that they were leasing their home to Oxford House to open a home for women recovering from addiction. And we have family members who have used halfway houses in the past, and was a benefit to them. And although we were concerned for our neighborhood and property values, we thought it would be okay. According to the Oxford House of Kansas Directory, they have five homes in Merriam. The one on our cul-de-sac at 9938 West 56th Street is the only one listed in Merriam for women and children. And knowing that the previous owners of the house, because we've lived there 23 years, we knew the previous owners had reconfigured the house and the floor plan to just two conforming bedrooms, and then they had some in a sub-basement. So we thought there would be about three residents max. Well, on Sunday, September 18th, there were nine vehicles parked there overnight. Most at the curb, even though the driveway is very deep and two cars wide. It seemed impossible that a few residents in recovery could have so many vehicles. One of the cars had expired temporary tags, so we notified the Merriam Police Department, and an officer came and spoke with the driver. I also contacted the homeowner, who gave me the number for the property manager, Chuck Liston. I contacted Chuck, who said that there were currently seven residents, and would not give the number of children also residing there. At least two of the cars that were parked there overnight were driven by men. These same two cars have been parked overnight repeatedly, including the one with the expired temporary tags. It was there this morning, they're still expired. I think it was 8:26 when those expired. It appears that one of those gentlemen is living in the car that is parked at the curb repeatedly. The home has used Republic Trash Services for years, and they pick up on Fridays. And we noticed that the trash containers, there are four of them now, are being left at the curb from Friday through Monday, or even longer. When I texted Chuck about it, he said that Republic has not been picking up on Fridays, and the containers have to stay at the curb until Republic schedules a pickup. Now, the Merriam website does not have Republic listed as a permitted trash hauler for our city. On a separate but related note, I recently learned that the city of Rowland Park re-annexed land from the city of Mission to build the Sunflower Medical Building there at the corner of Rowe and Johnson Drive. And it made me think how nice it would be if the city of Shawnee were to annex the land from Switzer to the railroad tracks. And one reason I think that would be cool is because Shawnee recently passed an ordinance limiting the number of unrelated residents in a single-family home to three. Now, knowing that annexation is just a pipe dream, perhaps the Merriam City Council could consider a similar ordinance that would protect the integrity of our neighborhoods and our property values. Thanks.
Okay, thank yours. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? I see no one rushing the podium, so, okay. Well, we will close out public items and move on to the consent agenda. All items listed in the setting are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there anyone that would like to have any item removed from the consent agenda? I see none. I would entertain a motion. Okay, Ms. Yodrich, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approved consent agenda items one through three.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Hands.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like the next item would be the mayor's report, and our first item up is employee service awards for the third quarter. All right, I'll meet Mr. Engel down there.
This is always a great opportunity for the council to recognize their staff. This is our, for the folks that have never been here. This is where we recognize employees that have hit their 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35 year anniversary. We used to do everybody once at one meeting, and we decided to spread it out several years ago. I think it works a lot better because we can have a few folks at a time, and we can really appreciate them as individuals, as part of a larger group. So we have three people that we're here to recognize this evening. The first one is not here, but I do want to acknowledge his efforts with Team Merriam. That's Matt Tomlinson. He's in our Public Works Department, five years of dedicated service, so it's a. The next employee that we want to recognize with five years of dedicated service to our community development department is Jason White.
Thank you, Jason. See if we can get a photo op here. She says we're good. Thank you.
Then our, then our next employee that we have with 30 years of dedicated service is our Public Works Director, James McDonald, 30 years of dedicated service.
You know, Jim, I go way back. 30 years I've known this show, man. We look just alike today, as we did back 30 years ago. One of my other back. Okay, let's just hold that. Let's just hold yours, and I'll just stand here. Okay, I'll put my glasses back on. All right. Next item up is a proclamation. Well, it's actually two proclamations. One, I'm only going to read one this evening. But I do want to talk about a second one, and I'm going to be reading this for Mount Olive Baptist Church because they are celebrating their 100th anniversary on October 16th of this year. So that's going to be coming up in between our council meetings, and I will be presenting that to the church. But for those of you that don't know, the, the building that Mount Olive is, is in was part of the 1949 decision for desegregation of schools. And the Brown versus Topeka decision itself, that obviously was important throughout, you know, the whole United States, so. That all started there in that building. But that'll be, that'll be read to them on the Sunday, so. But my other proclamation, which I always love reading, is, is for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Okay, and this is, this proclamation says, whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas the United States endorsed the United Nations Declaration of Rights and Indigenous People on December 16th, 2010. And whereas, a growing number of cities and towns in the United States have recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Reimagining Columbus Day as an opportunity to celebrate Indigenous heritage and resiliency. And whereas, the city of Merriam recognizes the historic, cultural, and contemporary significance of Indigenous peoples of the lands that also became known as the Americas. And whereas, the city of Merriam recognizes it was founded and built upon lands first inhabited by Indigenous peoples of this region, and acknowledges and honors these members of the community. And whereas, the city of Merriam values the many contributions made to our community through Indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural contribution that has shaped the character of the city. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, on behalf of the Merriam City Council, do hereby proclaim October 10th, 2022, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I also will note that, at least in the 2010 census, and for some reason we don't have the 2020 census yet, we have 51 people that identify as Indigenous Native Americans right here living in Merriam, so. So with that. Okay, I'd also like to acknowledge Director Slocum's staff for the Merriam Drive Live. If you guys weren't able to attend that, I mean, it was an awesome event. And some of the significant people I remember seeing, and I won't get them all, but I know was Smo was there, and Renee was there, and Ingrid, and Lisa, and I know there were others, but please thank all of them. Don't, I wouldn't want to leave anybody out for the, the great job and the great event that they put on. I heard there was 100,000 people down there. I don't know if that's correct, but my, well, maybe it wasn't quite that many. But there, there were a lot, and it was, it was a great event. We really appreciate all their efforts in, in putting that together, so. I also would just say that Councilmember Neal and I attended the League of Kansas Municipalities this weekend. It was a great event, and we, we learned a lot. Hopefully, and well, I have about a 50-page report to turn in for the city administrator to read, but he said he'd get right on it, so, anyway. That, one interesting note, though, I, one of the things with the keynote speaker was, talked about actually how to tell whether people are body language and identifications of whether people are lying or not. So I'm watching all of you out there, you know, just in case. We're, we're experts now, aren't we, Mr. Neal? But it was, it was a great seminar, and we look forward to next year. Okay, the things, I think that's probably about all I have for the mayor's report, I believe, so. Okay, well, let's move on to council items. We have a discussion of the undergrounding of utilities along Shymishon Parkway. It looks like we've got Director Dyer coming to the podium. I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Good morning, Mayor. Excuse me, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Brian Dyer, community involvement director. Today, just have a short presentation on where we're at with the project of undergrounding utilities along Shymishon Parkway, essentially between Antioch and Eby, so let me get there. I think we're all familiar with this. This is the renderings that we've seen a number of times from Merriam Grand Station. You're looking at the intersection of Shymishon Parkway down here at the bottom, and Antioch here, so you're looking to the south and to the west. Great rendering, you know, really going to be a beautiful, beautiful project. But as we all know, it's missing one thing, this rendering. It's missing all those wires. So obviously, that has a great impact on the visual quality of that, of the corridor. So we have the city staff, has been discussing with Drake and Evergy in regards to what would it take to get all those wires buried underground in this area between, again, Eby. Excuse me, along Shymishon Parkway between Eby and Antioch. Was it a million, 10 million, $100 million? Nobody really had an idea of the scope of the project, so we've been working with Evergy. They have, they have refined their estimate a little bit more as to where they think it's going, how much they think it's going to cost. So to give you a little bit of perspective about what we're talking about, I just got some additional information just today about it. So all the wires and all the poles that are in blue will be the ones that are looking to go underground and be removed, so. And then, just this morning, I found out that these here would also be underground, and, as well as the wires. And then, this one here may not go underground. They're still trying to figure out how to energize. If you're familiar, this is the emergency siren located over here, so they're trying to, still trying to figure out how to make that work and how to energize it. So again, it's still moving around a little bit. They're still working with it. Evergy's working with their third-party engineer at Talent. But obviously, as you can see, an extensive amount of underground would occur, be a great visual improvement to the corridor. Also, improve safety of the corridor, you know, how poles there that people can hit with their cars. Also, visibility for, as for pedestrians, as well as motorists, as they, as, so they don't have to look through those poles. Also, power that's underground is usually much more stable, better, you know, during windstorms and storms like that. So really think there's a lot of positive benefits to that. However, Evergy looks at this project as a beautification that the city has requested, so it would be something the city would be responsible for, for that cost. So again, as I mentioned, we're just trying to get a handle on what the cost is going to be. The most recent estimate that Evergy and their third-party consultant has provided is $4 million, and that's a ballpark figure. I want to stress on that because they continue to say it could move either direction. Most likely, it'll move up. Also, on top of that, will also be about $300,000 in cost to underground. All the other utilities on there, there's Google Fiber, there's Verizon, there's a number of utilities on those poles. They will also have to be underground as well. So this evening, what the Evergy has asked the city is just from consensus, if, if 4 million, actually about four and a half million, if the city is still interested in that project, and still interested in going forward with it, because if we are, the next step will be that Evergy and their consultants will put a much finer point on their pencil, come up with a much more robust estimate, really an engineer's estimate with that. And then, when that happens, we'll be coming back to you with agreements, estimates, and that'll be really your point on which you're making a commitment to, to fund this project. So also, we're trying to, obviously, to time this all together with the redevelopment camera. We, another reason why we're very interested in this, because if we're going to have all that activity, construction activity happening along that stretch, it's also going to be a great time to do it once. We don't want to be doing things twice and inconveniencing our residents and the folks along Shymishon Parkway two times. So the initial funding for this will come from CIP reserves, and then ultimately, if there's a decision to go forward with this project, again, that's not being made this evening. If there is a decision to go forward with the project, it would come out of the I-35 TIF funds. This is a TIF, this is a TIF-eligible project for that. So again, simply asking for consensus from the council this evening if they want to continue going forward with this. And again, what that will mean is that Evergy will instruct their third-party engineer to put together an engineer's estimate for this project. So that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions, Director Dyer? Mr. Neal.
Yeah, and this may be a dumb question. Has, this is sort of unrelated, but has anything moved on the Pegas, the acquisition? Have they, have they been able to acquire the Pegas building, or did that get done or not?
Well, I did not look today, but I believe there was, in the admin report, there was a report of where they are with the property acquisition. I do believe they're still going forward with it. I have not, we haven't heard anything, but that's not going to happen.
Yeah, no, I just, I was just wanting to make, make sure that, you know, since that had gone back and forth a little bit.
Well, our understanding is it's still going forward.
Okay, so.
Ms. Yodrich.
Would we be able to participate in the bid process with Evergy?
This will be an Evergy project. They will, they will control the project, and I forgot that also, we will upfront them the money.
And with a wallet, okay.
We will upfront, upfront them the money. Before any work happens, we will provide them with the check, and again, so no, it will be an Evergy project. It will not be, it will not be a city project.
Okay, Ms. Hands.
I think this is a wonderful, wonderful project. I, the only thing that makes me nervous is the thing that said, there's no guarantee that they won't exceed the cost estimate, which I understand. But it sounds like once we actually do agree, we are just opening up our, our wallets.
I wouldn't say opening up our wa, obviously, we'll have review and things like that as the project goes on, but this, staff cannot stretch this so much. This is an Evergy project. If this is something that the city wants to see happen, it will be done by Evergy. And so they are, they are a regulated monopoly, and they can operate in that fashion.
Ms. Caldwell, go ahead.
Yeah, just kind of follow up. The next step is agreements and.
The next, the next step is for Evergy to put together a very refined estimate.
Okay.
And then come back, and then we will bring that back to city council, the estimate, their agreements, and that, for the city council's review and consideration at that time.
So that would be the estimate that they're going to start claiming the disclaimers against?
Correct. That is exactly right.
And one other quick question. Do we have any commitments with Drake on the redevelopment agreement regarding this?
I believe there is some things with Drake on this, maybe not specifically spelled out, but we are going to be in discussions with Drake in regards to this. So it will be part of our discussions with them.
And I guess my, is their expectation that we're going to do this, is it part of the deal?
And that's a great question. I should have done a better job explaining it. These are two separate projects. Well, obviously, this one's coming about because of the conversations with Drake, but these are two separate projects. So if, this is not what we're anticipating, but if Merriam Grand Station doesn't happen, this project could still go forward and still be done, independent of Drake Development. So they're two separate projects that we're, correct, right? That's exactly right, and vice versa. But if Merriam Grand Station could go forward without undergrounding, so that is correct.
If I could just add to that, undergrounding is contemplated in the redevelopment agreement, and that they have committed to give us all of the right-of-way in anticipation of undergrounding. And if you'll recall, in an earlier iteration of Merriam Grand Station, there, there was a higher ask on the TIF. The original TIF ask was 30 million dollars. As we moved from that initial iteration to the current one, they reduced the ask to $25 million. That was in anticipation of us trying to pay for this out of the TIF. And so that they would commit to give us the right-of-way. We would have TIF capacity that we're not giving to the developer. We would actually use to develop the undergrounding project. So it's, it's been contemplated, but if, as Brian did a good job explaining, if we don't go forward with this, no harm, no foul. If they don't go home with that, go, go forward with their project, it's no harm, no foul to ours.
Ms. Chaveta.
Excuse me, so if we give the head nod tonight to have Evergy move forward with an estimate, where's the, like, off-ramp? Like, we're not committing to anything for them to do that. Like, once they come back with that estimate, we could say, we don't agree to these terms, et cetera.
That is correct. Yep, yep.
Or if it comes back at like 600, like 6.5 million instead of 4.5 or whatever.
Right, right. So, so the commitment time will be, as again, as we understand it in our meetings with Evergy, your commitment time will be when we bring to you an agreement, and so that will be the time.
So we're not paying anything for the estimate, I guess, is my point. Like, Evergy probably has excellent underretainer, or like, will we end up paying something for that?
Yes, again, in all my conversations with them, we are not being committed to anything at this point in time. And, but, but obviously, Evergy, if they were, they didn't want to commit their resources to a project, if the, if the council is saying, you know, hey, 4 million sounds like too much for us, too much of an ask at this point in time. So that's why they're asking for us to do that before they commit additional engineering and personal time, resources to it.
I have one more question, but go ahead, Jason.
Okay.
I assume, even though we're taking out utility poles in this plan, there'll still be streetlights that, because at one point, I think we talked about having, I don't remember the correct term, like cellphone boosters or repeaters that would be running along that strip. So they have to be on something. Would it be on streetlights?
There is, there is no cellphone boosters or small cell towers facilities on this, on this stretch of road at this point in time. So again, we're not anticipating that, but that's not to say that somebody, a cellphone provider couldn't come through at a later time and they decide they need small, small cell towers to go up, so. But at this point in time, we're not anticipating that.
Will there still be streetlights along that?
Yes, there will still be our streetlights. That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Neal.
Honestly, it's kind of a sticker shock to me that, that the cost here. I know we have also a number of, as you can see on the map, we have overhead power lines snaking through people's backyards. We have had some pretty significant storms which take out, have taken out power in the time that I've been here. And it just, again, seems to me that if we're going to spend four to five million, or whatever it is, on essentially making a, you know, a private property owner's property better, and, but, you know, I, I think we also have some, should have some commitment to the, some of the areas that we have that affect residents in storms, to underground some of the, some of the spots that are bad, too. I mean, I just, it's, it's hard for me to, hard for me to understand that additional cost, but anyway.
We have to start somewhere in the city, right? So this is a great start for us. I mean, our neighborhood loses power if somebody sneezes too hard, so I understand what you mean. And trust me, like, I, our neighborhood keeps a tally on how many times we lose power, right? So I understand what you mean, but this is a great opportunity for us to start that and build from it.
And I can tell you that Edelweiss has underground utilities, and we still lose power, so it's not the, the total solution.
Ms. Chaveta, do you have another question?
Thank you, Mayor. Question, with the estimate, will they also provide a timeline of kind of, or is that like further down, where?
That is further down, but they do understand, and they do appreciate our desire that if, to try to marry these two projects up and have them work together as they. So, so they do understand that, and they do understand the timing of that, so.
They can understand it, but will they?
Hold on to this question.
Just project manager, you know, sorry.
Yeah, that, that's a whole another question, and obviously, you know, as we're beholding, excuse me, they, Evergy are beholding to their supply chains and being able to get materials and things like that. So obviously, we'll continue to work through those issues to hopefully, if we come to you all with an agreement that we do have some specific dates and things like that in there, I can't guarantee that, but that's what we're going to try to do.
Okay, Ms. Hands.
Because we're going a little bit on some of the side streets on the north side of Shymishon Parkway, are there already the tunnels, the conduits, whatever, under the, under Shymishon?
There is not. We, at the staff level, asked Evergy to look on the north side in anticipation of, obviously, that's the, that's the library, and anticipation of an area being redeveloped, and trying to make it easier and more straightforward for the underground to occur on the north side. So that's why, at the staff level, we asked Evergy to look, to get those wires underneath Shymishon Parkway. So again, as the north side hopefully redevelops, easier to underground those wires as well.
But it just looks like it might be very disruptive to traffic.
Um, I don't think, I, I don't think boring underneath it is going to be the most destructive part of the traffic to that, to that, to the redevelopment over there.
Sorry, I have one more question. So could we also ask them to do an estimate that only looks at the south side of Shymishon Parkway instead of both? Or is that like, is that just asking for?
I don't know the answer to that. Again, from staff's position, as we talked about, if we're going to disrupt things, traffic, we would like to get it disrupted at one time, so, so they can, so when the north side develops, we're not worried about disrupting traffic again to get those lines underneath Shymishon Parkway.
But that could arguably be five-plus years from now, and if we could get the south side done and only affect eastbound traffic now, and we could do it for less, is that, is, I'm just asking, I'm playing devil's advocate.
It's not, this is not going to get cheaper to do it.
Yeah.
It's, and I would think Evergy, it's not going to get cheaper to do it. Again, from a disruption standpoint, it off ones.
I mean, if, if we don't do at least one pole on the north side, it's going to come across overhead and land on the corner.
That's true, yeah.
You will, that does exactly right. If we don't, you'll see all those wires hanging over Shymishon Parkway.
It just seems kind of meek on the north side, when, when there's still so many poles, like, around that area, I guess.
Yeah, and, and the reason for that is this area here is not energized from Shymishon Parkway. This area comes. So again, the hope is that when this area. So again, the hope is that when this area here redevelops, these poles here, or at least these would go away, and perhaps we could work with Evergy to get rid of some more poles.
Any other questions, Director Dyer? I see no other questions. I guess you're probably looking for some sort of head nod of whether or not.
Just a consensus is all we need, I believe.
Okay, I see heads moving. This is slight movement from Mr. Calladall. That was a, yeah. I, I think you have your answer.
Well, I'm sitting here contemplating four million dollars. And you know, we sometimes talk about spending TIF money like it's free. But that's, one-point-eight million of that is a school district. And what would the schoolchildren say about this, who won't get one-point-eight million dollars because we do this?
I, I will say that that money is, is obviously already in the district itself, and we do have to spend it within the ten-year timeframe, and that money will not be going back to them no matter what. So understanding what you're saying.
I'm saying, but if we don't spend it, it will go back to the taxing people. It goes somewhere.
It'd go back to the county.
Well, the county, who then goes back to all of the different places.
I don't know the answer to that one, but.
Anyway, it's not free money.
Sure.
It's four million dollars. It's not free money.
Okay. Thank you, Director Dyer. Okay, let's see. Well, it looks like next item up would be October CIP update. All right, Director McDonald's upcoming up podium.
All right. Good evening. I have your October CIP update. We'll start with the West Frontage Road improvements. Miles Construction is currently working on the curb replacement and the commercial driveway entrances. West Frontage Road is currently closed at the bridge until Thursday, October thirteenth. They are performing the necessary bridge deck repairs along with the polymer overlay, so that we anticipate they'll be open on Thursday. Also, we anticipate before the substantial completion date, two more closings on the West Frontage Road. One would be for the pedestrian bridge, when that is delivered, and that would just be a four-hour to six-hour closing. And then the one that's substantial would be when BNSF comes in, and they're going to be upgrading the crossing panels, and that would probably be a seven-day closure. We do not have those dates as of yet.
Thanks.
The next one is the Fifty-Fifth Street project from Marion Drive to West City Limits. Kansas Heavy is replacing the curbs and driveway approaches on the north side of Fifty-Fifth Street. Their goal is to have the north side of Fifty-Fifth Street completed before inclement weather hits. We are still waiting to hear from Evergy to move their poles on the south side. We hope they'll get started here in the next month or so. So once they're done, then we can move to the other side of the roadway. The completion date for that is May thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three. The mill and overlay program is substantially complete. Dirt work and turf restoration should be completed later this week, and the contractor is on the hook to water the new sod for twenty days. We're not getting the rain tomorrow is what they're calling for. And the final is the Marion Drive street improvements from Johnson Drive to Fifty-Fifth Street. The preliminary plans have been reviewed by staff and the city engineer. They will return the design team with our initial comments. We have our second utility meeting scheduled for October twelfth, and that project engineering is moving right along here. Answer any questions?
So do we have any questions, Director McDonald?
I have one unrelated. Could, could you mention the dates of our large item pickup?
I can. That is next week, the seventeenth through the twenty-first.
Seventeenth through the twenty-first. Okay. Oh, Ms. Hands?
I have a very personal question. If a, if an upright piano appeared alongside at, at big item pickup, how would that be managed?
Very easily. We have large equipment. It wouldn't be the first.
Okay, that's good to know.
If it's at the curb, we'll pick it up.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Silver.
I have a somewhat unrelated comment. So as some of you may know, I took some video footage of your crew tarring cracks on Knox Street, and I posted it on my Instagram. And to my dismay, it is overwhelmingly the most popular post that I've ever put on my Instagram. And I've only gotten three negative comments, which I've had great rebuttals for. So thank you, thank your crew, and thank you for maintaining the streets as well as you do.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions, Director McDonald?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have one, too.
Go ahead.
I, we were at a town last week, and I noticed the bicycle markings on Goodman Street when I got back on Saturday.
Yes, this is, that's part of the, the bike plan. We have about seventy-two more Sherrows going in this before, actually, they're starting them now, so they'll be before winter hits.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you, Director McDonald. Okay, it looks like, Mr. Engel, do we have anything else?
Just two other quick items, Mayor. First one, new resident packets for the third quarter are in your drawer. Appreciate Jenna and her folks for putting that together. Great opportunity for councilmembers to go out and meet some of their new neighbors, new residents. Second one, this Saturday is our annual fall recycling event at Nations Holding, the former Lee Jeans Building. That is our e-recycle event that we sponsor, co-sponsor with the city of Shawnee. It'll be from eight till eleven. Bicycles, e-waste, paper shredding, paint, maybe eyeglasses, 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 I'm getting the head nod. We still need volunteers for, at the very least, the paint cleanup. Appreciate, I've seen a couple of folks that have signed up. That's a great, a, a great team-building opportunity. If anybody wants to go out to household waste and sort some paint the following weeks, the, all the sign-up information is available online, or if you reach out to Jenna or myself or Julie, we can, we can get you coordinated. If not, just share with your neighbors to come divert some of their trash from the waste stream, and they can drop some stuff off at Nations. Saturday. Saturday morning.
Go ahead, Mr. Silver.
I would like to add, because I found out last year, spray paint is not part of the paint, and I don't think some varnish is.
Oil, but yeah, it's like latex and.
Right, right. I found out the hard way, but I understand.
Throw it in the dumpster on your way out of parking lot. Thank you for the update on that. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Engel? Seeing no questions, I would entertain a motion.
You want to get somewhere?
Yeah. I'll just stay as long as you want, Mr. Silver. Ms. Hands?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.